Good evening, and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, November 11th, 2024. I would like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers and our student liaisons. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Ifker? Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Vice President Vera?
Here.
President Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on August 27, 2024. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on a district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of October 28th, 2024, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Vera. Any comments? Hearing no comments. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and next, good evening to our student liaisons, Nina Davis and Abby Rothstein. Would you please share your student liaison report with us at this time?
Good evening. Last week, West Orange High School had their semifinal football game against Piscataway, where we won in a clean sweep of 35 to 0, meaning that our football team will be advancing to state sectionals championship against East Orange High School this Friday. Additionally, the student council... Yeah, clap. Sorry. Additionally, this week, the student council will be assembling our Thanksgiving candy grams, where the funds will be proceeded to our local food pantry. During the week before Thanksgiving break, students will be able to purchase bags of candy during our lunch block, where they can write a note to people who are they most thankful to and have them delivered during periods.
I'm sorry. Another thing, our girls volleyball team and girls soccer team both made it to the second rounds of states. Unfortunately, they did lose during the second round, but we were very proud of them. And as well, our boys soccer team made it to their quarterfinals. They lost too, but we were proud of everybody, every player and coach for what they have done. We also have our upcoming fall play, which will be on the 15th and 16th, which is Friday and Saturday this week. Our actors at our school have worked very hard to put on Clue, which is a hilarious murder mystery play based on the beloved board game. You can get your tickets online, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, now, Mr. Moore, it is time for your report. Would you please share your superintendent's report with us?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm proud to recognize two staff members who deserve the spotlight. First, Ms. Jenny Garcia Rezak, who was one of the very first Hispanic teachers hired here in our district. Jenny worked on our elementary level, and tonight, after serving our students for over 32 years, we recognize her trailblazing qualities and congratulate Ms. Garcia Rezak on her retirement. I am sure she will be missed by many, but especially by staff and families at St. Cloud, where she has been teaching for most of her career. Tonight, we present a certificate of appreciation for her dedication and her love to our students and families. Next, I wish to acknowledge a wonderful achievement for a colleague and a friend who serves our district as a school psychologist. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Dr. Lee Cohen, who was recently recognized by the NJASP with the School Psychologist of the Year Award. The New Jersey Association of School Psychologists bestows the award to a practicing school psychologist in a public or private school setting for the delivery of services in an exemplary manner, and to those who have earned the respect of students, parents, teachers, school staff, administrators, and community members. West Orange is privileged to have Dr. Cohen amongst us every day for the past 23-plus years. So tonight, we recognize this accomplishment with pride. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Lee Cohen. President Rock, tonight, we also have the privilege of meeting our Diversity, Equity, Access, and Inclusion Committee administrators, who take their role very seriously and enjoy the hard work of this mission. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you our DEAI, or Diversity, Equity, Access, and Inclusion Committee, WOW, the acronym for the West Orange Way. WOW members, will you please come to the front?
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. All right, good evening. Superintendent Moore, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Mendez, and the Board of Education members. My name is Dr. Carrie Orange Jones, and I'm here to talk about the West Orange Way and introduce Team WOW. So I'm just going to speak to the name of the group, Team WOW. As we know, we see across the country the diminishment of DEAI initiatives. So while Superintendent Moore has introduced us as such, that is our goal and our mission. However, we wanted to move away from the terminology so that, you know, there's funds involved, and as things change and evolve, we don't know that DEAI is going to be language that will be accepted. So we decided as a group, what should we do? And we decided that we wanted to be the exemplar for other districts in the area, across the country, across the world, and develop the West Orange Way. How do we handle diversity, equity, access, inclusion? And this work is passionate for us, and we thank Superintendent Moore for choosing us to take on this mission. And without further ado, I'm going to let us continue with the presentation. Thank you very much.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Moore, Ms. Mendez, and Ms. Flowers. I hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. My name is Joelle Castillo, and I'm one of the lucky WOW committee members. I am the principal at Hazel, and as you can see from the presentation, other committee members are Ms. Olivia Betances. She is the assistant principal at Roosevelt Middle School. We have Ms. Kimia Jackson. She's the principal at Redwood Elementary School. Dr. Carrie Orange, who you just heard from, she's the assistant principal of Edison Middle School. We have Mr. Plata. Felix Plata is a supervisor for world language in ESL and K-12. We also have a volunteer member, Mr. Oscar Guerrero. He is the West Orange High School principal. And then the consultant specialists that we're going to be using to support our mission this year for all of the elementary, middle schools, and high school within the district will be Dr. Tanya Breland and Dr. Erica Leek from TISO, as well as Mr. Christopher Finn from Freedom, Inc., and Ms. April Stevens from Landing on Purpose. And Ms. April Stevens from Landing on Purpose will also have a targeted role working with the three Title I schools in the district.
So to speak a little further regarding our overall district goal for this year, the committee also includes representatives or ambassadors from each of the schools in the district. For the most part, elementary schools have one to two representatives or ambassadors, as well as the middle schools, and the high school has four ambassadors. And our overall district goal is to advance the district's efforts in DEI, that's diversity, equity, access, and inclusion, by using and working with these building-based committees, which include the principals and assistant principals at each building, to advance, again, advance the DEI initiatives, to support the cultural responsive practices that the professional development, the consultants will be working with, as well as our committees, when we meet as a whole, will be working through how we can best support our students to achieve overall, every student, and that's our goal. And regarding our West Orange Way, regardless of what's happening around the world, around the country, this is how the West Orange Way is. This is what we believe in, what we value, and we value all of our students, regardless of where they come from, their perspectives. So that really was a major part of the driving force of it being the West Orange Way or the WOW Committee.
Good evening. So I'm just going to dig in a little bit for further explanation to the concept of the West Orange Way. So obviously, all of us being educators, first and foremost, we thought of this concept, first of all, embracing the rich diversity that really makes up West Orange. We thought about all of the voices, the perspectives, and really the need to create an all-inclusive framework or pathway that truly represented our town. And the WOW Committee or the West Orange Way is committed to developing this framework, which we've already done. We began developing the framework as early as March of this year. And as educators, we thought about it simply on the basis of a rubric, basic standards. When it comes down to focusing on creating an environment of belonging, where anyone can walk into any school or any West Orange public school building and have the same feeling, the same sentiment, feel that they belong, regardless of who they are, then we have achieved our mission. So in order to guide us through that path, we will spend the next 18 months deliberately working on a framework for all things DEAI. How do we conduct challenging but necessary conversations with each other? That's one of the WOW rubrics we've been intensely working on since this summer. How do we approach really making sure that all of the wonderful work that precedes our committee, and I do want to share that, my career, the first 20 years of my career was spent in Teneck Public Schools, but I was attracted to this district because of the work that people like Ms. Mendez, Ms. Jackson, Dr. Orange Jones, my direct principal, Mr. Hush, have done prior to this committee carrying that torch. So we will use the work that's already been embedded, that's attracted many of us to this district, and continue to carry that torch and build those standards into our framework. The goal is to make sure that we create a pathway for every school, a way that we can measure and really align what we're doing with what really represents the diversity of West Orange, where we can say we're truly being equitable, we are truly being inclusive, and we are truly conscious of the concept of inclusivity through our practices.
Good evening. I'm Kimia Jackson, the principal of Redwood, as already stated. So we've created a mission for WOW, and that's to create a distinguished system of communication, collaboration, that leverages, recognizes, and celebrates our diversity for the betterment of all of our students and staff. So we decided to recruit ambassadors, teacher ambassadors. Why did we do that? So they could turnkey all the information that we're learning and that we're gathering over time. They can turnkey it directly back to their colleagues in a more intentional manner and a more intimate manner. We also recruited consultants because we know that where we are experts in different areas, when we have consultants to support our initiatives, they can give us an expertise that we may not have at this point, right? Well, we're all administrators. We're all doing our daily assignments, so we have the consultants to come out and support us. So the way they'll support us, TISO has already worked with our administrators last year, and they're working with us this year by offering different professional development experiences on how to deal with microaggressions, how to notice microaggressions, because in past surveys, we found out that that is something that is a challenge for not only our staff, but our students and our community. We also have Freedom, Inc., who's going to work with our faculty outside of the Title I schools. So they'll be working with the high school and, like I said, those schools that are not Title I. We also have Landing Purpose, who will intentionally work with our Title I schools to address the different systems that are acknowledged through free and reduced lunch, our ESL population, and more. So Team WOW has already started the work, and we're going to continue, like Ms. Betances said, over the next 18 months, and we're looking forward to giving you out or telling you more about what we've done. Thank you.
Board, please come back to the days.
Oh, yeah, you will. So stay here.
Okay, you caught me. I work off a script. I'm sorry. Thank you, Team WOW. We appreciate it. Thank you for that introduction. We look forward to your work. In addition to this evening's presentation, Ms. Ebony Demendez, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, will provide a presentation of the 2024 New Jersey State Assessment Report. Ms. Mendez?
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? My name is Ebony Demendez. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and this evening, I, on behalf of our team, our administrative team consisting of our directors, supervisors, principals, assistant principals, and all of our teachers, will be presenting our state assessment results. First, thank you to our board, who continuously supports our work, specifically as we think about our interventions and strategies, and how we would apply those to improve our work through our budgeting, and to Michelle Martino, our Director of Assessment Accountability and Intervention, who has been extremely instrumental in helping me put these data together so that we can represent it to the board and the public in a concise way. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessments are statewide assessments that assess students' progress toward the learning standards in ELA, math and science. We, as a district, are required to report out on various groups, our district and state comparison, our three-year performance, our demographic subgroups, aggregated and disaggregated, so that we can see how we're performing across these content areas over time. As a part of this presentation, we'll also look at the Dynamic Learning Maps, and that is an assessment that is administered to our students with disabilities who are unable to sit for the NJSLA proper. So who takes the NJSLA? Who took it in May of 2024? It was administered over a two-to-three-day period for each content area in ELA and math, grades three through nine, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. I thought it was important to note our demographic in the district, just for context, so that when we're looking at these data, we understand who's represented. Our general education population, 75%. Our special education population is 25% of the data, and our multilingual learners represent 7%. So when we're looking at proficiency rates, just keep that in mind. That is a distinction that should be noted, that it represents 75% general ed, 25% special ed, and 7% multilingual learners. Also, to keep in mind is when we're Also to keep in mind is when we're looking at our proficiency rates in math in particular, students who have been in a US school for less than one year are required to take math. So in those math numbers, you will see our multilingual learners represented. That is significant in some instances because our first-year students who are taking math that are multilingual learners is 22%. So that is a significant number. For ELA, they are not required to take the assessment in their first year in a US school. They are required to take it in their second year. These are the performance levels. Level one would be did not meet expectations yet, and level five is exceeded expectations. When we think about proficiency, we're looking at levels four and five combined, who met and who exceeded. Throughout tonight's presentation, we will focus both on the proficiency rate and the percentage of students in the approaching category. And that approaching category is very important to us because we are looking at growth. And what our data is beginning to show us is that students who are in the approaching category, 28% of them over two years are moving into met or exceeded. That's a very, a strong percentage of growth. So again, a distinction that we want to keep in mind as we're looking through our data. We will begin with math. In grades three through five, math measures numbers and operations in base ten and fractions, operations in algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. So here is the district state comparison. Again, these are data that we are required to present by the state. For context, we have 1,425 students who tested in grades three through five. 76% were general ed, 24.3% were special ed, and 7.3% were multilingual learners. For the past three years consistently, the district is outperforming the state in grades three through five math. And the gap is widening. In 2022, we were exceeding the state by 9%. But now in 2024, we're exceeding the state by 13.4%. So not only are we increasing in proficiency, but we are also widening the gap between us and the state. When we think about our grade-level performance, 63.1% of our students are meeting or exceeding proficiency in grade three, exceeding the state by 15.6%. In grade four, 53.6%. And in grade five, 56.3%, exceeding the state by 16%. I'm going to draw your attention to that approaching category. Again, when looking at our data over three years, we see a consistent movement of at least 28% of our students moving out of approaching into meet or exceeding over two years. So here we have between 23 and 24.7% of our students in this category through our academic support programs, through our intervention programs, through our tier one, two, three, multi-tiered systems of support. We are able to identify our students who are at the cusp of proficiency and work to move our students toward greater gains. What we did notice this year in our data is that if you look at the did not yet meet category, 76% of those students are students with IEPs. And so then that is informing our work with our students with disabilities and how we're addressing our students in those programs. Our individualized education plans are very specific to the modifications needed in order for the students to be able to demonstrate proficiency on these assessments. And then on the other side of that, we have additional six students who received perfect scores in grades three through five. When we look at our three-year NJSLA performance comparison in grades three through five, this is the grade-level performance. It is not a cohort. We see significant increases here in grades three at 17.9% and grade five at 23.7%. We see a modest gain in grade four. In all instances, we see growth. Here's our data, performance by ethnicity and race. In our district, just as a whole, again, for context, we have 17% of our student body that is white, 30% of our student body is black or African-American, 39% is Hispanic or Latino, 4% is Asian, and 10% is in two or more races. I'm going to just explain how these data are changing. Approximately 10% of our students in West Orange in grades three through five identify as two or more races. Since this category has been added, then those students are removed from the single ethnicity category. That was not so in prior years. So that's important to know. So in the two or more races, you may find students who are African-American, who are Asian, who are white, but not Hispanic. If they are in the Hispanic category, they're only in the Hispanic category. They're removed from the other ethnicities or races. This was not the case before. Hispanic was always considered an ethnicity. It is now, for data purposes, being considered a race. This slide highlights the performance of our students in grades three through five on the NJSLA math assessment, specifically for students with disabilities and those who are economically disadvantaged and multilingual learners. When planning instruction and intervention strategies, we are prioritizing the needs of our students by subgroup. We're looking at our students with disabilities with their individualized educational plans, with their programming, and also for our economically disadvantaged in our Title I schools and in our academic support programs. It is important to note that 48% of our students in academic support are also in the economically disadvantaged category. So when we're thinking about how are our programs directly supporting our students? We know we asked the board to commit with us to add academic support teachers last year, the middle school levels. And so then here, we can see how it's directly impacting our growth. When we think about our economically disadvantaged students in particular, we see very strong growth. Grade three, 30% from 2002 to 2024. And grade five, 36.1% growth from 2022 to 2024. And then we see a modest growth of 12.5% in grade four. Grade four is the grade in the elementary schools where we're paying particular attention to. It is not currently showing the growth that the other two grades are. However, we understand what the work is here and how we're going to address it. We do highlight the performance of the economically disadvantaged students here, again, because it is directly reflected in our Title I approaches and our multi-tiered systems of support and in our academic support and intervention. When we're looking at our data, we're able to identify specifically what the strengths and areas of focus are in math through I Ready, through different benchmark assessments, units assessments, et cetera. And here is a list. I won't go through it all. It will be available, however, on our website. But this really just lays out what are the strengths. Students in grades three to five are really showing strong fluency. In addition, subtraction, multiplication, as well as proficiency in fraction operations and geometry. They're able to effectively solve word problems and apply area, perimeter, and volume formulas. When we're thinking about the areas of focus, it's really around multi-step word problems, comparing and modeling fractions, and enhancing geometry and measurement skills. So these are the areas in which we will focus. When we're thinking about curriculum instruction and assessment, our focus continues on math content proficiency. Key strategies that we're including are around academic vocabulary, practicing fluency and problem solving, using actionable data to guide our instruction. We are, in year two, implementation of I Ready, which is going extremely well. We are working through productive struggle in our classrooms. Our students are solving problems. They're working on their tasks, and they're demonstrating their commitment to mathematical discourse. When we're thinking about professional development, we're focusing on enhancing math instruction through targeted support for our teachers and for our principals and for our coach. The key areas include preparing that I Ready classroom for math, using diagnostic data to inform our instruction, and promote strong mathematical conversations. Our principals are engaging in professional development alongside our curriculum team. They're doing instructional walks. They're unpacking the I Ready data. They're doing dives with their teachers during grade-level meetings. And so then we are collectively uniting around our data to make sure that we understand what our students need and how to approach that as a unit and as a team. When we think about math three to five, here's where we believe we're seeing our great gains. We have multi-tiered systems of support. We have individualized education plans. We have our supports for multilingual learners. And we have extensive instructional coaching where coaches are pushing into the classrooms with our school leaders, with our teachers, to model instructional strategies and support in the classrooms, directly in the classrooms versus just the one-off workshops. So those classroom visits identify instructional needs. They support teacher development and the implementation of I Ready classroom math. That was math three through five. I'm now going to shift over to math six through eight. And as we move into our six to eight performance data, it's important to acknowledge that our results in this area are currently below expectations. Our state and national data show that this is also recognized challenge across the state and the nation. However, we, as West Orange, we said the West Orange Way, right? We acknowledge and we hold accountability and responsibility for our growth and our commitment to our students. We acknowledge that our data in math six to eight is our area of focus, and we're going to use that as an opportunity for growth and improvement. We are working actively with our principals and math improvement teams to develop targeted action plans. We'll talk about those this evening for how we're going to strengthen our curriculum alignment, our fidelity of implementation, and focused interventions for the students who need additional support. So when we begin to look at our math six, eight data, you will see our levels of proficiency in grades six, seven, and eight. In the light blue, we've added the different coursework that students are engaging in in grades seven and eight. The state normally categorizes math six, seven, and eight as that content area, that subject area for the middle school grade span. But in West Orange, we offer Algebra I and Algebra II at the middle school as well. So if we look at our performance in grade six, 41.3% of our students are meeting or exceeding state standards, surpassing the state performance by 5.1%. In grades seven and eight, our students are either enrolled in math seven or eight, or they're enrolled in Algebra I or Algebra II in grade eight. So for grade seven, 30.6% of our students are meeting or exceeding the state standards in math seven. And of that math seven cohort, 25% are students who are in our special education programs or 504. And 70% of the students took the Algebra I assessment in place of math, achieving a proficiency rate of 98.6%. In grade eight, 21.7% of our students are meeting or exceeding the state standards in math eight. And of that cohort, approximately 33% are students with disabilities and in our 504 accommodations. And 142 students took Algebra I or Algebra II assessments instead of the grade eight math test. For those taking Algebra I in grade eight, 72.1% are proficient in Algebra I. And for those taking Algebra II in eighth grade, 51.7% are proficient. Looking at that approaching cusp, the students who are at the cusp of proficiency, we have 22.7 to 37.4% of our students. And again, our data shows that at least 28% of those students will also move into meet or exceeding over the next two years. When we're thinking about Algebra I, the state considers all students who are tested in Algebra I, seventh, eighth, and for our high school students, grades nine through 11. So that 35% proficiency in Algebra I includes all of those. And so then here is the disaggregation by grade. 534 students participated in the Algebra I assessment. When we're looking at our performance over three years, grade six has improvement in grade-level proficiency by 26.3%. Grade seven has improvement by 53.8% and grade eight by 97.3%. So these numbers are large. They seem big because we're starting at a lower level, right? If we had 11% proficiency in math eight, and now we're at 21.7%, that's why that number seems large. So it was important to us to look at our math peer cohort because looking at the grade-level increase year by year really doesn't show the same students. So here, we're looking at the exact same students over three years. These are the students who sat with us for three consecutive years, a minimum of three consecutive years, took the test, and are demonstrating growth over year. So when we look at our third through fifth-grade cohort, we see students as compared to self in third grade were at 54.9% proficiency back in 2022. And now that they're in fifth grade, they're at 61.1% proficiency. So here, we can see the growth in the cohort. Fourth to sixth grade has a decline of 12.5%. And here is the biggest transition that we have in our district. This is from fifth to sixth grade, students entering a new school for middle school, a convergence of all of our elementary schools into one new school for the first time, and a reduction in our math program minutes. We moved from 80 minutes in math to 55 in the middle school. So as we're thinking about our interventions and we're thinking about the differences that may be contributing to our performance in math, these are some of our considerations. From fifth to seventh grade, we see two transitions. We see a transition from fifth into sixth grade and from sixth into the seventh grade. From sixth to eighth grade, we have a 5.8% increase. And from seventh to ninth grade, a decline of the 9.9%. I want to point out the difference between ninth-grade performance and 11th-grade graduation-ready results. So here in ninth grade, we have 24.5% proficiency back in 2022 when schools were now reopening and we were beginning to take these state assessments again for the first time. And then we look at who is identified as graduation-ready in grade 11. And so these two numbers, they just don't drive, right? They're two different tests. They're two different scale scores. How is it that we have 24.5% proficient in ninth grade? And by the time they get to 11th grade, they're at 61.5% proficient? So while we can't compare those two assessments directly because they're not the same, because the scale scores are different, over time, what we'll be able to do is use a conversion framework that would say, if this data holds for the next three years, we can look at it and we can start to translate these data. An approximate 24% in math in ninth grade might equal a 60% in 11th grade. And we can start to make distinctions between the differences in those two assessments. Again, these are our strengths and areas of focus in grades six to eight and Algebra I. These will be posted. And then we move to our action plans. And so then we've been meeting with our principals from Edison, Liberty, Roosevelt, and the high school. We've really started to sit down and think about what are the specific action steps that we will implement as a unified campaign this year around our middle school math? And we're looking at our instructional framework. Specifically, math six to eight, what is our core instruction and assessment? It's at I Ready. We've adopted a program. We adopted it during COVID while we were closing. And so we did a reset on our professional development last year. And this year, we're moving full swing into the implementation of I Ready. And one of the first things we're looking for is fidelity of implementation. We're working with our consultants who are coming in to model. They've unpacked our data with us. They've taken a look at our instructional groupings. They've sat with our principals to talk about how they can push into the classrooms and observe what they should be looking for in the Try, Discuss, Connect framework. We have, as a team, identified when we observe teachers and the instruction, what we're looking for specifically. These comprehension checks, end-of-unit assessments, our groupings, and our use of data, so that we are all looking for the same thing as it relates to fidelity of implementation. Fidelity of implementation means that if the I Ready research says you must implement it for this number of minutes in this way using this framework, then you should get these results. So then we need to make sure that that's exactly how it's being implemented in the classrooms so that we can expect the same results. And we're receiving professional development, not only our teachers, but our administrators, where we have lesson modeling that will take place. These are the things that are happening in the area of CNI and instruction, in the area of school-based strategies for improvement. Principals will lead math improvement teams where they will clarify expectations for fidelity of implementation. They will look at data analysis initiatives, and they will create intervention cohorts. We are putting instructional supports in six to eight in our advisory connections. We're in our advisory classes. We're making sure that math intervention is a priority. We're looking at the number of hours that students are on my path in order to have that individualized math instruction[1789.66] via the technology available. And on tonight's agenda, you will see that we have placed our math after-school support that will be offered to our students in grades six through eight and Algebra I in the high school three times a week, December through May. And we're also looking at a math incentive program. Additional supports at our high school are that we are having Math Lab during lunch, math after-school support, again, three times a week, December through May, and Math Honor Society tutoring. For homeschool connection, again, we have the MyPath. We're expecting students to sit with MyPath for thirty to fifty minutes per week. And the principals and the schools will be working with our parents for parent engagement on how they can help their students at home, how they can help monitor the progress and the growth, and how we can partner together to ensure that our students are finding greater success. This next area, our explorations for future implementation, is what we're exploring. We're thinking about, if we had additional time for math instruction in grades six through nine, what might that look like? If we were able to double-dose pre-algebra integration across math six, what would that look like? And if we were able to double-dose algebra integration across math seven to eight, what would that look like? So our teams are exploring these as a place of inquiry. We're going to see what is feasible, and then we will make a presentation to our superintendent and to our board when we're ready. For Algebra I, II, and geometry, here is our proficiency. Algebra I, thirty-five percent. Algebra II, thirty-three point three percent. And geometry, seventy-two percent. Again, we have about twenty-five to thirty-six point nine percent of our students who are close to meeting proficiency and approaching, but here we have a different data set. Our data for approaching says that seventy percent of the students who are in approaching will move to met or exceeding over the next two years. That's what our data is showing as far as our growth. We can expect that type of movement from approaching into met or exceeding. Okay? And then we're looking at our Algebra II and geometry over three years. Algebra I over three years has increased by four point five percent. Algebra II by thirty-nine point nine percent. And geometry has declined seven point two percent. In the top blue box, you'll see who's taking the assessments. So Algebra I, we have students in grades seven through eleven taking that assessment. In Algebra II, it's students in grades eight through ten. And geometry, grades nine through ten. This is our performance by ethnicity and race. Again, this will be posted on our district website. This is our performance by demographic. With special attention to our economically disadvantaged students who are showing significant gains that point directly to our academic support and intervention programs. Our strengths and areas of focus in Algebra I, II, and geometry are noted on this slide. And then math improvement strategies for the high school. We're thinking about how we're looking at Delta Math for assigning targeted practice, for monitoring progress regularly, and for giving students and staff instructional feedback throughout the work and benchmark process. We're developing common assessments in math at the high school so that we can measure student progress mid and end year. And we have professional development that is very specific to calibrating our observation process. Action steps also include those math improvement teams that we talked about, our data analysis meetings, and our observations. We're going to move to English Language Arts. English Language Arts measures literary analysis, additional passage sets, narrative writing tasks, and research simulation tasks. I won't repeat, as I did with math. I kind of set all of the framework for math. But here in ELA, we see our percent proficiency. Again, over the past three years, the district has consistently outperformed the state. In two thousand two, by nine percent. And now in two thousand twenty-four, by fourteen percent. We see our proficiency rates at fifty-nine point one, sixty-five point one, and sixty-five point five percent in our students who are in the approaching category. Our data over two years does show that the students in approaching are moving at about a sixty percent proficiency into met or exceeding. This is our three-year comparison. Again, in all areas, for grade level performance, we're seeing growth in grades three and five at fourteen point eight and fourteen point three percent, respectively. And when we look at our district-state comparison for ELA six, nine, again, we're seeing our proficiency at sixty-six point three percent in grade six, fifty-three point five in grade seven, fifty-nine point six in grade eight, and sixty point three in grade nine. When we look at our three-year comparison, we see strong growth in grades six, seven, and nine with a challenge in grade seven. We see a decline of seven point seven percent. We do see a very strong growth in grade six, and I want to point this out because it's showing across all content areas, how in grade six, we're showing growth over the past two years. And so I think this is important to think about all of the things that have happened as we have considered grade six performance, as we've considered the new interventions, the academic support that has been pushed into grade six. This is ELA pure cohort performance. From third to fifth, this cohort has increased by thirty point two percent as compared to self. In grades four to six, thirteen point one percent. In grades five to seven, there was a decrease of point nine. In grades six to eight, twenty-nine point nine percent. And in grades seven to nine, thirteen point five percent. Again, this cohort performance is extremely important to us as we're looking at students who have been with us for three consecutive years and tested with us because that is a more clear indication of the impact of the programs on our students so that we'll know what's working and what needs to be strengthened. And then we see our ninth grade performance in two thousand twenty-two at fifty point seven, and those same students, by the time they reach grade eleven, are at ninety-three point five percent proficiency. That is a significant gain. These are our data by performance, by ethnicity and race, by demographic, our areas of strength and areas of focus in reading and writing for ELA. Grades three through five. We have our areas of strength and focus for grades six through nine. Again, these will be posted. And specifically, for English Language Arts in K through five, I'm pausing here to really just talk about the increasing levels of support that we've added to our curriculum. Here, we're really looking at, how can we make sure that we are supporting all of our students through our ELA curriculum to include all of our subgroups? And so then we've integrated increasing levels of support so that we can inform teachers in the classrooms how they can support Tier One students, those who are pulling them out for multi-tiered systems of support, tiers two and three, and for our special education classrooms for how they can support our students with light, moderate, or substantial support. We've done the same for our multilingual learners. We've created differentiated resources that are embedded directly into every single unit in order to provide direct support to our staff for second language acquisition. And we have pushed in an assessment crosswalk so that we can think about how we're looking at the difference between I Ready performance and our ELA program, and how those align. For our multi-tiered systems of support, we've talked about this, for academic intervention, for IEP students, and for instructional coaching. And then for curriculum and instruction, these are the areas in which we are focusing. Our curriculum instruction is really thinking about that new curriculum that we have at our middle school, our professional learning communities. We have new standards that were implemented this year, so our curriculum was revised to align to those standards. We have our reading and writing informational texts for ELA and social studies. And we are exploring how we're going to reconsider benchmarking for ELA in the elementary grade span, moving from FNP to RIGB. We continue with our Literacy Academy in year two, where our teachers are providing professional development to our teachers in all things literacy. And then we move on to science. Science is administered in five, eight, and eleven. And so here, we see our proficiency. Forty-one point two in grade five, twenty-seven point seven in grade eight, and twenty-six point five in grade eleven. You'll see our proficiency where it exceeds the state and where the state is performing on these science assessments in these three grades. As compared to our grade level performance over three years, we see that we are increasing in our performance. Grade five, we increased by forty-three point one percent. Grade eight, we increased by seventy-eight point seven percent. And in grade eleven, we have a decline of negative four point seven percent. Here's our data by demographic and ethnicity. When we're thinking about our strengths and areas of focus in science, there was something that really was interesting in a shift. Open SIEED was the focus or the impetus that the state gave science as far as writing curriculum. They have reassessed that because it has revealed gaps between Open SIEED and the science standards. And so then now, we are going to rewrite our science curriculum to align to those new findings from the state. We will align that to our desired performance expectations, and we will conduct an audit this year and review our instructional materials and supplemental resources in science. Here are interventions and strategies that will take place, including a greater focus on the science and engineering practices at the core of instructional time, science skill sets and techniques, focus on data with their discipline, and new and enhanced online platform for K to five National Geographic program. Our last one is our dynamic learning maps in grades three through eight and eleven. Again, these assessments are administered to the students with the most cognitive disabilities for whom general state assessments are not appropriate. And so then here, we see the data for these students. It is administered in all of the same grades as the state assessments, but there are so few students in these categories that we could only report out for grades four, seven, and eight. That concludes the state assessment presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Mendez. And President Rock, I open it up to you to ask the board for any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. I trust that my colleagues have questions they would like to ask of Mr. Mendez, or comments they'd like to make.
Yes, do you want me to go first? Thank you. Mr. Mendez, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you and your team putting together the data for the board and for our community. You reference throughout the slides a comparison between the district and the state. And in some categories, the district's performance exceeds that of the state. However, does the district or does your department set school performance goals? And if so, what informs those goals for the district?
Yes. So yes, we set performance goals. The state's performance is not a part of that goal setting. For this presentation, we're required to compare our district's findings with that of the state, so we're meeting that requirement. When we're thinking about assessment goals and goals for our content areas, we're looking at multiple types of data. So then we're thinking about math in particular. We're looking at our I Ready data. We're looking at how students are performing over time on that data in particular. We're looking at our end-of-unit assessments. We're looking at our benchmark assessments, and then we're setting goals around those. This year in particular, our goals are being set around our I Ready data. Because that data is the most consistent piece of data that we have, we're able to benchmark our students in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. So that gives us a continuum of time in which we can assess. That data shows us the diagnostic from the beginning. It shows us the data in the winter after we've applied specific interventions, and then where we meet out as it relates to our state assessment proficiency. I Ready also allows us to project out to compare to how we're going to perform on a state assessment. And so far, that alignment is coming in tightly. And so then we're using that data to make those goals. We do have that as a part of our district goals, and so then I can share that at a separate time. For ELA, we're also using I Ready data because we use I Ready data to test all of our students in ELA. As we mentioned in the presentation, we have designed an assessment crosswalk that clearly tells us what I Ready looks like in our ELA inter-reading program, so we are able to use that data as well. We've moved away from using FNP data. So again, we have a more constant way of setting those goals. We've also set goals specifically for ELA around our I Ready data.
And I must apologize. I'm probably going to bounce around a little bit because your comments may take me to a different question. But in your comments, not presented in the slides, but in your comments, you alluded to the fact that the transitions that our children encounter when they move from fifth to sixth grade, and then again, from sixth to seventh grade, has some impact. But it appears, based on the slides and the data, that that impact is greater seen in math than in ELA.
Yes.
There's growth in ELA, but a lack of growth or I should say some level of statistical decline on the math. So have you looked at those school transitions and take into account prior the impact of those transitions? And how is that used to look at your multi-tiered levels of support when you know that the students are going to encounter those transitions?
Absolutely. So yes, looking at those data is critical, and those two content areas are very different. And so then when we think about the impact that a fifty-five-minute class might have on math in the middle school versus the eighty in elementary, and the increase in standards in grade six math and our I Ready program that says it is most profitable and effective at a block, and we're unable to do that, then it directly impacts math where it may not impact ELA as much.
Is the block shortened for ELA as well? Or is it so?
It is, but I think what is being assessed is different, and the research would suggest that that difference is impacting the math, and it's not impacting the ELA, right? So that framework needs to be considered differently for math. And I think here in our district, we're good at that, right? We're not going to apply one strategy for all of it. It's going to look very different in math as it does from what it should look like in ELA.
So with respect to the math at grades six through eight, I Ready has been in place since the fall of two thousand nineteen, correct?
We adopted I Ready when we closed for the school closures, right? For COVID. So we adopted it in that year. And so then it never really took ground. It never really took hold because when we were coming back, we were working on really just transitioning back to in-school instruction. What we did do was a very strong reset last year with I Ready as our professional development, looking at what fidelity of implementation looks like, looking at our resources, what our expectations are of the instruction in the classroom. And so then this year, we're pushing in to really monitor for fidelity of implementation.
So the plan, the action plan, six to eight, Algebra I action plan, is it very different from the original plan when the I Ready math was implemented at six through eight? Meaning you have an action plan, but how different is it than the original plan of implementation from two thousand nineteen?
I think the action plan for implementation was one of implementation that was stunted, right? We were not able to execute it. And so now, with a reset in our action plan, we're recognizing and acknowledging the areas in which we needed to reset.
The move from approached expectations to proficiency, is that based on the pure cohort data? Or is it based on? Or is it based on just the year-over-year statistical progression of?
Pure cohort data. So what we did was?
In either. So in math or ELA, we have some, some data that indicates, you said twenty-eight percent of, I may have that number wrong.
No, that's correct.
Twenty-eight percent in math.
Seventy percent in ELA.
Seventy percent in ELA. And so my question, Dr. Bryant, was does that reflect the pure cohort data? Those movements from approach to proficient?
Yes, absolutely. And so then we can't make that projection off of grade level proficiency. We would have to look at the cohort data. What we have now is three years of cohort data, right? Before, we didn't have that because again, the schools closed. We didn't administer the assessment in 2019. We didn't administer it in 2020. So now we have 2022 data, 2023 data, 2024 data. Now we have a cohort. So what we're able to do is over those three years, we're able to say, how many students started out in approaching in 2022 and where did they land in 2024? Or how many students started out and did not yet meet in 2022? And where did they land in 2024? And looking over the three years for each of the cohorts, third through fifth, fourth through sixth, fifth through seventh, seventh through eighth. We can't have tenth grade data, right? We don't have tenth grade data. But in looking over those cohorts for middle school math in particular, there is a twenty-eight percent consistency in that if over two years, students continue to grow the way that they have been over the past three, that we see about twenty-eight percent of those students in approaching will meet or exceed proficiency in two years. When we look at that data for ELA, we're seeing a strong correlation, right? A strong movement in approaching. So the students are picking up, they're moving quicker at seventy percent. And then when we get to the high school, that movement is around fifty-nine percent. So that is looking at pure cohort data across bands, what percentage of students are moving. What we did also notice was that, I think it was about seventy-six percent of the students in the did not yet. I'm looking at Michelle because she has that data in her head. Seventy-six percent of our students in the did not yet meet category are students with disabilities with an IEP, of which about fifty-eight percent will be exempt by the time they get to eleventh grade. So that's an interesting dynamic for us because the state says that they will not be required to pass these assessments and then they are in these other data. What does that tell us? That tells us that we still have to take care of all of our students, right? It doesn't matter if the state is exempting them or not. We have to make provision and we have to work with all of our students. We have to design very strong programs for them. We have to design IEP goals that really align with grade level expectations. We have to put in the interventions, the differentiation, and we have to meet the needs of all of our students. It is though reflected in our eleventh grade data. And that was the comparison that was made, that there are exemptions there and they're no longer in that data.
My last question before I yield to my colleagues, and I may have additional questions that may be sparked by their comments. How are parents across math and ELA at all grade levels been engaged with respect to supporting the academic success of their child? So and, you know, those kids who are in, and specifically those kids who are in the approached or in the did not meet, are parents advised of their kids? I mean, obviously they get those reports when they come out in the fall from what the summative assessment was in the spring. But what does the district do specifically to those, for those families in terms of engagement for those kids that did not meet, partially met, or approached?
So what we have available to us through I Ready, let's start there. We're able to lean into the parent portal that exists where parents can see their students' progress, not only in their I Ready assignments, but on MyPath. So MyPath is an individualized platform where the students are tested. It is the questions that are asked of the students are, they have to get correct a certain percentage of the time and then they'll be moved on to another domain in which they can demonstrate mastery. Parents are able to engage with the students there. They're able to see the student growth in each of those domains and how they're progressing. And they're able to see the strengths and the weaknesses of the students by domain. In addition to that, in the portal, they're able to access all of the texts. They're able to access videos of how the teachers are teaching the instruction. So they are able to say, I know for, we hear this all the time, right? I didn't learn the math that way. So then the parents have the access to, well, this is how the math is being taught. This is the unit that the student is in and these are the strategies that are being used. So the parents have access to that.
All parents have access, right?
Yeah.
But I'm saying, is there a point of differentiation for those students who did not meet or partially met or approached? Where not at October when the, when the parents get those reports, but on some level, day-to-day or when, do we do anything different for those students and the engagement of parents? Because if a kid is meeting or exceeding, they still have access to the, to the same MyPath portal. Parents can access that information.
I think what the MyPath portal however is showing is for the student who is not meeting, that that's what's being assigned. They're being assigned these specific strategies, cluster areas, domains for independent practice, for continued practice because the student has need of strengthening in those areas. So that's one of the things that MyPath will show. If a student is meeting or exceeding, then it's going to be accelerating the student into stretch growth goals. Right? But if the student needs additional support in those areas, that's what the parent is able to see and engage with. In addition to that, there are the I Ready reports that do go home that talk about what are the areas that are needed to be worked on. And during our parent conferences, our teachers are reaching out to our parents. And we have our math nights that are being held across the district, right? Where we sit with parents to go over what the I Ready data looks like, where there are certain workshops or tutorials for parents to say, this is how you can help your child with homework. So we do have those math nights available as well.
Gotcha. I guess, I guess my concern is there may not be complete alignment between the I Ready diagnostic data and the NJLSA summative data, right? In terms of, MyPath may not be hitting upon those areas of growth for individual students. They may not completely line up.
I would, I would say that they should line up because they're both aligned to the state's standards and they're both measuring the state's standards. I think what I Ready would say on how MyPath is used, if a student spends between thirty to forty-nine minutes per week on MyPath, if they are demonstrating gains in those domains, if they are meeting their typical or stretch growth goals, which is available to the parent in the portal and in the reports, then the student in two years should demonstrate proficiency on the NJSLA. So I think it directly relates and it's directly correlated to the standards and it directly projects out what a student should produce on an NJSLA. That's the way it's designed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Dr. Bryant, did you have some questions?
Yeah. Thank you for the beautiful visuals and for all the disaggregation that you and the team have done. It's clear that you took a lot of time on this report. I'll be generous and say that the math results are sobering. And they leave me with quite a few questions about the path forward. You talked a lot about the inputs and we clearly have seen the outputs right here. But one thing we haven't talked about is sort of what's happening in the four walls of the classroom. We talked a lot about the professional learning that principals and teachers are getting. We talked a lot about sort of the new curriculum and sort of all the things we're throwing at the problem. We have not at all heard or began to understand how the teaching inside the classroom is matching up to the curricula that have been placed before them, is matching up to the assessments that students are getting during class time. And I think that that's what I need to color in the picture a little bit more for me. So I'd love to sort of sit and have some, some conversation or perhaps understand what you're seeing in observations, like in a very clear and granular way. Speaking of grain size, there's a lot of different tricks in disaggregation that happen throughout these slides. The n sizes shift over and over and over. I see an n size of seventy, I see one of sixty, I see one of a hundred and fifty-two. And that is confusing to, I'll say myself as a person who sort of plays in data. And I have really big questions about why we do that and what that's meant to either cover for or make space for. So what I'd like to see and love to see you deliver to the board is like, do we have some really sort of big, high-level data about what all students are doing? And then if you could break that out for me by school, particularly because you named this convergence that happens at Edison. And I want to kind of see like what happens when we put all the kids together? Is it the transition? Is there some mindset work that we actually need to be thinking through? Particularly around mathematics and math ability. That's the second one. When I look through what appears to be sort of action plans and things we plan to do, many of the words and phrases are things that should probably show up on the job description and most of the folks charged to do this job. I also think many of those things show up in your average ASCD magazine or Teaching and Learning magazine. If we're not going to do anything different than what's already been done, how can we expect different results? So I think in that space, in terms of action plans, I'd like to see some things set to timelines. How often are we progress monitoring? Who's utilizing the intervention services? What does the dosage look like? And you actually named sort of double dosing somewhere in here. But if we're giving somebody the same dose or the same thing they've been getting that didn't work, are we doing anything? It's a big question for me. The final thing I'll share is that thirty percent proficiency is fine to say out loud. What worries me is the seventy kids on the other side of that equation, right? And I don't think anybody should be comfortable saying that seventy percent of children are not proficient. That is incredibly problematic. And I would like to see who those seventy percent are and what we plan to do to support them, not within two years. Nearly immediately, what should we expect to see? I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Did you want to respond to any of that?
I might be able to respond to a few things. So I've, I've heard some asks and so then we can produce those for you. In terms of our n size, the n size was consistent across the presentations until we get to pullouts. So when we think about who's being pulled out for Algebra One, for Math Seven, we have to pull that out. And so then, no trick there. That is specifically that when the state gives that state percent proficiency for Math Seven, it's only for students in Math Seven. Because our students don't only take Math Seven, then we have to add and give context to those who are in Algebra One and Eight. So then you'll see that for Algebra One, we had to disaggregate the seventy because they're not sitting in that Math Seven number. And in grade eight, we had to provide context for the Algebra One student or the Algebra Two student who's taking that course in Math Eight because then the data would not be accurate. And so then there's where we, we had to disaggregate that. With regard to observations and what we're looking for in our classrooms, we can certainly prepare what we are looking for in the classrooms. And I think the work and the mindset and what's happening between the four walls is fidelity of implementation. That's where the work is going to sit with us in majority as a starting place, as a starting place, as a baseline for measurement. When we're thinking about mindset, then absolutely, we can think about all of that mindset work where is our culture that our students can or is our culture where our students can't? And how are we bridging gaps between those two spaces of thinking? And then in regards to action plans, of course, action plans come very specific with SMART goals, with timelines, with responsibilities, with tasks, with progress monitoring. And we have that. On a state assessment presentation like today, we give an overview. And so then what you just see is a brief summary. But absolutely, and so then a part of our district goals, once those are published, then you will see our specific measurable data points, what we're looking for as a goal and how we plan to achieve that and what that looks like progress monitored over time.
So Ebony, let me just be a little more specific and crystal clear here. So we as educators love to use that word fidelity, right? Like if we just use it with fidelity, right? But we never say what that sounds like, looks like, and feels like inside of a classroom, right? Does that mean that you're jumping from unit one to unit five? Do we actually know? Do we know what's happening? Do we have a good monitoring system for that? So that's number one. Number two, when I look at sort of what you have marked as strengths and folk eye, many of them are the exact same, on the exact same chart. So that's where perhaps our fidelity is to get super specific about what we're driving toward in terms of focus and leveraging the strengths specifically. Because when I go across both sides of these, you got a lot of matches.
You got it. Follow up, Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, let me just actually quickly follow up on, on Dr. Bryant's points. Not specifically, but really kind of globally. I want to look at that, it's no longer up on the board, that slide seventeen, the disaggregation by grade of Algebra One. So grade seven, actually is slide sixteen and seventeen. In grade seven, seventy percent, seventy students participated in Algebra One in place of grade level, grade seven math. And of those seventy students, ninety-eight point six are proficient. Correct?
Yes.
In grade eight, can't read this slide. One hundred forty-two participated in Algebra One.
Or two.
Sorry?
Or two.
Or two. So ninety-six in Algebra One of that one hundred forty-two. And seventy-two point one percent of them are proficient.
Eighty-six. So for eighth grade, there were eighty-six students who took the Algebra One assessment in eighth grade and they have a proficiency rate of seventy-two point one percent.
But if we move to West Orange High School.
Yes.
And I think I may have erroneously misinterpreted this slide. Fourteen point eight percent are proficient at West Orange High School. But I did not realize until I saw this slide that that takes into account grades nine through eleven.
Yes, sir.
Not those students who would be at grade level math in grade nine.
Correct.
So, but it is not disaggregated by grade in grades nine through eleven.
No, it is not. Algebra One, the expectation is for the students to take it by grade nine, but we have students who are entering the district who are not taking it in grade nine. We have all of our MLs in there. And so then when we come into those types of numbers, we're not disaggregating.
So ideally, although we would like to get students and we should get students Algebra before ninth grade, I'd be curious to know what percentage of ninth graders where Algebra One is grade level math, what percentage of those ninth graders are proficient? Because this fourteen point eight percent takes into account just not the freshmen, but the sophomores and the juniors as well.
Yes.
And, and in addition to that, then what percentage of tenth and eleventh graders are also still taking Algebra One, right? Which means they're not taking Algebra Two or not taking geometry, correct?
Correct. Again, that number will most likely be our students who are entering school in high school, our multilingual learners and students.
That's completely fine. We can, we can, we can distill that, but I think it's important to know
Understood.
what that is. And then two other quick questions. And this really goes as we, as we continue to progress the district and there are a lot of things about areas of growth, areas of focus, professional development. What is the district's capacity to implement the professional development for teachers and administrators as outlined in your PowerPoint? So I mean, how, how well are we doing it? Are there things we need to improve upon? What are the resources needed? I mean, that's, that's, that's a big question, but if we have these prescriptive things that are laid out, how are we monitoring it? How do we know where the gaps are in professional development? One thing that stood out to me is in our math proficiency, I think it was in our math proficiency, I think it was grade three to five, the areas of growth really took into account this convergence of language arts with math. So the two-stage math problems, word problems, simple computations seem to be uh, area of proficiency. But uh, when you incorporate the need to be able to comprehend on a level that allows you to answer a math question that is uh, layered within a word problem, there's a challenge, right? And so I, I'm concerned that, we're not concerned, but I'm just curious as to what are our levels of professional development that allow us to achieve? Not a fidelity of, of, of implementation, but to create accountability so that we can adjust to support student growth and achievement overall. Uh, and then my last question, and this is kind of a, my last two questions. We talked a lot last year about that when we implemented the ELA curriculum and what the assessments would be. And you mentioned uh, then a, a potential move away from Fanta Sempronel. And you mentioned tonight that um, we're looking at implementation of Rigby versus Fanta Sempronel.
We're field testing Rigby now.
Field testing it. What, what is the operational difference between Rigby and Fanta Sempronel?
I think they're both a very similar assessment. They're looking at the students um, when it comes to um, sitting individually with a student one-on-one, um, to look at their um, patterns and their fluency, um, and measuring um, the students proficiency in those areas directly versus on a pen and paper test, right? So I can't hear fluency on um, a pen and paper test. Um, they're both measuring those areas. I think what we're looking for in the Rigby is if there is an efficiency of time, um, are we looking for a more constant benchmarking? Um, that would allow us to um, make comparisons between how the student is growing in comparison to self, um, that's more efficient.
You mentioned science and new changes to the science. The current science curriculum is the National Geographic curriculum, correct?
It is. Um, I think what we're hearing, our understanding with the curriculum for science was that the state at one point directed our alignment to Open Said. Um, and so then that's still what's posted on, on their website, right? But as we're looking at those performance benchmarks and how they align to the standards um, and to the um, NGSS, there is a disparity there. And so then there is a revision taking place um, in that science curriculum to align to those performance expectations as set forth by uh, the standards and not so much by Open Said. And so then our new uh, supervisor of science is really working on those areas.
And I'm sorry, President Rock, this is the last question. Notwithstanding the impact of the pandemic in the implementation of I-ready math in grade six through eight, we have also now implemented I-ready math uh, in K through five and uh, inter-reading as the ELA curriculum in K through five. Uh, two major changes within the last uh, three years. Have you seen similar issues with implementation, similar issues with monitoring? Uh, is the curriculum being implemented as prescribed, meeting the board's expectations? I'm just curious how that's going.
Yeah, totally different and absolutely yes to fidelity, absolutely yes to a uniform application of I-ready implementation. I, I don't know that we can compare the two. Um, one happened and schools closed and then we were really focused on getting back in person. And I understand that we're far removed from that at this point. Um, that was however, our truth, that's what happened. And so then we were unable to really get I-ready off the ground at the middle school. That's not the case with I-ready in grades K through five. In I-ready K through five, we've had uh, a really stellar implementation. Our teachers are wrapping themselves around the program. Of course, it comes with its challenges, but we see um, when we're walking into those classrooms, everybody using those texts, everybody using the resources, everybody really wrapping themselves around those try, discuss it techniques and frameworks. Um, our staff, our math supervisor, uh, Ms. Burke, our instructional coach um, who's pushing in, our principals who are pushing in and everyone else who really um, seeks to observe in collaboration with our consultants who we push in with regularly to do classroom visits, to observe, to say, is this working, is this a model classroom? We have teachers visiting those classrooms to see what good instruction looks like. We have lesson modeling taking place. We have coaches that push in on cycles to do professional development with our teachers, with our lesson models and with our principals. And so then there's a full implementation of I-ready that's visible. Um, and I would suggest that our um, research generally shows when you implement a program, the first two years you're going to take dips and we're not seeing dips in year one and now we're in year two of implementation. So that's a strong statement of fidelity. And I understand we have to define fidelity and so I'm defining it. I think you've heard me, you know, define it a little more in just this response. Um, but at the end of the day, we have to see that if we're saying that we've adopted um, 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 this program and we've implemented new curriculum, then we need to see those resources being used instructionally. We need to see the data being used during small group instruction. We need to see that the teachers are allowing the students to productively struggle and that we're not, you know, handholding and coddling the students, right? That we're allowing them to think independently, that they're engaging in the mathematical discourse. So this is what I'm defining as fidelity of implementation, that we're administering the I-ready to all of our students and the diagnostic, not to half, right? That we're administering that winter assessment, that we're administering those end of unit assessments and that we're doing that together, because if everybody's implementing similarly, then we have that as a baseline to measure effectiveness. So yes to I-ready, um, to um, inter-reading, this is our first year. Um, very different, very uh, new approach. Our teachers are acclimating, they're getting used to it, but they're diving in. There, we are not walking into classrooms and seeing an absence of the instructional materials. We're not seeing an absence of the curriculum being implemented. And so then we can expect that with that implementation, we're going to get that same strength um, um, in results. It will take time. I understand two years is a long time, but that's, you know, uh, we can say within two years, we can expect at least X percentage amount of growth from one year to the next, right? So if we're projecting ten to fifteen percent growth each year and then by the end of second year to see a movement toward proficiency, then that's a reasonable expectation. It won't be reasonable for us to say if we're at thirty percent proficiency, that next year we're at eighty. Um, but I can with confidence say if we're at thirty percent this year and we're moving with ten to fifteen percent each year, that we will be moving toward proficiency at greater strength. Um, and our data is showing us that, that our students are moving from the lower bands of proficiency through um, the performance levels at, at twenty-eight percent in math and at seventy percent in ELA uh, on that approaching, so.
Uh, uh, so that you understand the basis of that question and that my colleagues understand it and the superintendent Moore understands it. Uh, we are at least two years removed from the pandemic in terms of its material impact in terms of being in the classroom, right? And we implemented I-ready math in the fall of twenty twenty-two.
Fall of twenty twenty-two. For three-five?
For, for, for K five, K through five.
Yes.
Right? And at this
Yes, this is our second year of implementation.
Second year. This is our second year. And although I-ready math at six through eight was initially implemented at twenty nineteen, stalled due to the pandemic for a period of twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. The implementations, notwithstanding the impacts of the pandemic, mirror one another, correct?
I think there is a um, I, I think there is something to be said for um, an implementation in a year where we've closed. Um, uh, our inability as a district to shift from the connected math mind to the I-ready mind and having a gap of time in which we were not able to get that off the ground, right?
I'm not referencing the, 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 the closed period. I'm referencing the period in the fall of twenty-three today.
So we are in the rebound, we are in the reset. We are in the reset. Last year, we reset all, all of our professional development and here we are with um, pushing into um, the implementation.
But the effective implementation of both I-ready math, K through five and six through eight, they run parallel, notwithstanding the impact of the pandemic.
They should run parallel, yes.
Correct? But you've not seen some of the challenges as you indicate in K five that you've seen in six-eight.
Correct. We see greater challenges in six-eight.
So I, if, if it pleases the president and there's no objection from the majority of the board, that the superintendent is okay, I, I think there needs to be some analysis as to what the challenges are in six-eight. Uh, and that should be enumerated to the board so that the superintendent and your team can effectively address that. And I think that falls in line with uh, the data that we've seen. I think it falls in line with uh, Dr. Bryant's questions. And although we do not have the benefit of Mr. Ifker uh, here tonight, I think he would likely uh, indicate the same. So I, I think that's an important analysis, Mr. Mendez, that needs to be done.
Yes, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, President.
Do you have a follow-up?
Just a point of clarification. You mentioned, of course, I understand lag in curriculum implementation and in any form of implementation, you've got to lag until you get results. You've got leading indicators, lagging indicators, of course. Can you just clarify for me, were you saying, when you sort of defined fidelity, were you saying that the math in grade seven has been implemented with fidelity and the thirty percent is a result of that?
No.
Oh, okay.
Not at all.
All right, thank you.
Vice President, Ms. Vera, is there anything you'd like to?
Uh, I have a question, um, you know, as um, teacher, former teacher, as counselor, I really con- my great concern is the parents' participation. You know, according to what I see is, you know, the action to follow, what we are going to do in order to increase the parents' participation. Because I know that, you know, my path, we don't have any problem or maybe we can have some problem trying to uh, you know, engage the students be, for those uh, thirty to fifty minutes to use my path in order to practice and develop the skills. But what happened with the parents, that is how we can monitor that participation. Because, you know, parents' engagement is very important in the, you know, education system.
Absolutely.
And uh, you know, that's my concern, how we get to those parents, the multilingual parents who don't, don't speak the language. How we involve them into the, into that participation?
Yeah, I think um, yes, uh, we can look at and continue to look at ways to increase our parent um, participation and engagement. Um, I spoke a little bit about some of the things that we're already doing as it relates to our multilingual parents in particular. Um, Mr. Plata, who's our supervisor of ESL um, and World Languages, he um, certainly has many initiatives where we see um, after-school programs, tutorials where parents are engaged alongside the students. Um, and so then I think that's one of the additional strategies that we're using, right? Where the parents are coming into the schools, especially in our Title I schools where we have higher percentages of our multilingual um, learners um, and they're learning alongside their children. We have homework help for the students with the parent, right? Um, for the, how they can help. Um, we are sending out our reports in multi uh, languages, right? Any report that goes out, it's in both languages and there are um, spaces in the portal where the parents can access all of these materials in native language. So the parents can access I-ready books and um, the videos um, in native language.
Yeah, I, I saw the presentation you did for the I-ready. Uh, what is excellent, I really agree with that, but you know, we, I would like to see more participation. So we need really to, you know, involve the parents. But I'm saying in this uh, you know, it's how can we do that? We can develop a plan in order to bring the parents, I know Mr. Plata is very active. And you know, last meeting, I want to bring this situation, right for this, the Blue River School. But I saw this, the participation, parents' participation was full. I was mentioning that to Mr. Stevenson about, you know, how the parking lot was full. And I can see the parents are engaged. Okay, but when I went around uh, Washington School, I don't see many. That's what we have to bring together to the parents, to Washington School, uh, Hazel Avenue School, because I know there is a lot of Spanish-speaking students there. So we need to develop some plan in order to bring the parents, teach them how they can use it. Because, you know, I know is my path, okay, fine, but you know, we need to see how they can go into that, lock in there and use it. So, you know, it's something like, maybe we need to work on, on this.
Sure, we'll continue to work on that. Um, I, I do want to just shout out to Washington. They probably have the highest parent participation. Um, when we go there, um, Ms. Vera, there can be at any given point sixty, eighty parents. When Washington has a parent night event for math or whatever it is, parents come out in full force. Um, yes, we can increase that. Yes, we can continue to work with them and offer additional programs. Um, and their participation is good, right? It's tight. Um, Hazel of our schools, um, they showed the most growth this year. Um, it was astounding to show how much growth was demonstrated on their, on their results. And um, they're, they also have programs with our parents and we will continue to increase those and we will continue to work those. So, yes, yes, and yes. I just wanted to make sure we know that.
No, I, I understand, you know, remember, I'm brand new, I'm a member, not brand new, but I, I was going to be a year. But you know, right now, that's why we go to, with Dr. Ifker, we visit the schools. We go to the principal, that's the way we can, you know,
Yes.
get more information about it.
Okay.
And, you know, we have to give the time so they can be, you know, knowledgeable about the use of my path and I ready.
Absolutely, yes, yes, absolutely.
Vice President, are you talking about specifically the multilingual lan- multi-language learners? You're talking about all kids or the multilingual?
The, all the students.
All the students.
All of the students. I'm not only the multilingual, it's all of the students, yes.
Yes, agreed, Ms. Vera, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Vera?
No, nothing else.
Uh, so my colleagues, I think, uh, asked many questions. Um, so I, I, I don't want to belabor the point and extend this very lengthy presentation too much longer. Uh, so I'll just offer three brief um, comments, observations, I guess, on the way out. Um, one, since we talked about a lot of negatives, I'll start with a positive, a bright spot. Right, the ELA scores do in a lot of ways look good. Um, I mean, there's always room for improvement, but generally we're exceeding the state across the board, we're seeing improvements across the board and our cohorts are improving. And, and to me, one of the most important or, if it's most important or interesting points is that if fifty percent of the students are effective in eighth grade, ninth grade rather, but that translates into a ninety-plus percent effect or ninety-plus percent performance at high school and they're graduation-ready. Right, I think there's some kind of, at the state level, issue with the calibration of the test.
Agreed.
And, and so it can be shocking sometimes to see fifties and sixties and think, oh, we have a lot of problems here. Not to say we don't have problems that we can address and improve on, but if we're getting ninety-plus percent of kids to the finish line and they're graduating, graduation-ready, that we're on the right track and we're doing good work there. Um, the flip side though is that you, you can't say the same about math. So I echo the, the concerns that my colleagues have about that section, right? The, the scores along the way are concerning and the end result, right? The sixty percent that are actually graduation-ready at high school is problematic, so we're not, you know, there may still be some kind of issue with the calibration of the test there, but we're still not getting to where we need to be. So we do need to, to, to make some improvements on that. I think in hearing all the comments and questions tonight, it's clear that this board uh, is keenly interested in this. Um, and so we look forward to the updates and uh, kind of the analysis of how we're going to get there, uh, because I think all of us, Mr. Ifker, who's not here included, expect to see some improvements over the next year and, and, and the next few years. Um, and close with a, a final observation, something you said to, to one of Mr. Stevenson's questions, kind of made me think about this. We were talking about I-ready and you said if the, you know, the, the theory is if we do X and B, if the student, I think it was in this case, they do this and they do that and they do this, right? There's a clear hypothesis that this gets us to a passing grade, right? And, and we've articulated that these are the steps along the way. So, you know, we have a lot of different hypotheses in here, you know, things like we changed the curriculum in math, we've implemented I-ready, we've changed the curriculum in language arts. So we have a lot of ideas about how these things are going to improve and we've articulated those, some a little more fuzzy, some a little more concretely. So at the end, right, one of two things happens, the students affect, you know, the student scores well or they don't and we got to figure out what the issue was. Either the hypothesis was wrong, right? We did X thinking that would fix it or it didn't and we have to evaluate all of We did X thinking that would fix it or it didn't, and we have to evaluate all of our assumptions along the way. Or something, you know, didn't work to the fidelity point, you know? Maybe we said we were going to do X, but we really did Y. And so then we have to figure out, you know, what is that breakdown? Is it the hypothesis that's wrong or is it the implementation that's wrong? Or is it some mix of them? Is it different for this kid versus that kid? And how are we going to fix, you know, you can't build Rome today and fix everything, but we can improve things along the way. And so by the end of this year, I think we should be able to articulate that some of these things didn't work out the way we expected them to, but this is how we're going to specifically change this piece next year to make it better. And if we build on that over the next few years, you know, we can see improvements year over year and get to where we all want to be, so.
Thank you.
That wasn't much of a question. If you want to respond, you can, but otherwise that was, that was the extent of my comments on it. But thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board members. Before I conclude my report, one, I would like to make a comment to the board. I want to thank you for being so committed to helping us improve. This is my second year as a superintendent. I'm learning a lot, but what I am learning is your commitment as board members to the improvement of our school system for all of us that live here, and I appreciate it. We, but I also want to thank Mr. Mendez for standing strong and listening, taking notes. And I know that she's working hard to figure out and to find ways to improve us, but I want to thank her for presenting tonight and answering questions for us. I know it's not easy and it's a challenge. I know coming into this job, I knew that math would be a challenge. But I appreciate you answering questions, taking on the challenge. I know you're working on it. Yeah, I do think the feedback, we need to not only take notes, but we need to take a, digest it and come up with our own answers and get back to our board members. As you know, we have committees on this board in which we can report out to, which we should, and continue our collaboration as our board members represent our citizens. So we appreciate that. I want to take a little time to acknowledge the middle school principals that sat in the room tonight in support, not only taking accountability, but standing strong to make improvements. I thank the three middle school principals. They're here tonight, Lionel Hodge, Xavier Fitzgerald, Steve Melendez. They're here tonight along with their assistant principals who were here earlier, Dr. Carrie Orange, Olivia Batantis. And I appreciate them being here in a tough conversation, but to hear the feedback, which tells this community, they not only take accountability, but they're committed to making it better. And they did not have to be here, but they came. And I appreciate that because we are committed. And this is just an example of the work in which we want to do, plan to do, and will do. As I'm lucky enough to be the superintendent here and this team that I have, I'm telling you, is committed to your kids. Trust me, this is my second year and in my second year, I've seen the work they've done. I also want to thank Michelle for coming today and I want to thank her as she is our assessment and accountability director. And she has done a fine job of giving us the data, crunching the data and working with us. So thank you to all of you for standing tonight and addressing this head-on, dealing with it. I appreciate it and I know that we have a, we're going to have a good future. We're going to move towards some improvement. And we'll report back to this board and this community as we're all committed to doing better. So thank you guys for that. I appreciate it. Brian, I'm happy to announce that there has been no incidents of HIV reported this month. So that would conclude my report for tonight.
Thank you for that, Mr. Moore. Look back at my script and see where we are in this agenda. Forgotten, lost our place. So do we have any committee reports from the board or board comments?
No specific report, President Rock, but I would just say to our community members at large, to our parents, that this Board of Education does, and I'm saying this from a policy standpoint, so I'm taking this privilege as the, as the policy chair, to say that under New Jersey law, the board meets regularly, meets monthly, and I invite all community members to participate, to come to the board meetings, to engage with the board, to ask questions of just not our school performance, but obviously our culture, our administration, and just how, as we talked about earlier, the West Orange way, as that takes shape and develops. So, you know, it's important that the work that the board does, the community is aware of it. And so I'm just inviting the community to continue to participate, to participate, to become engaged. Because from a policy standpoint, this board meets regularly, is here every month at least to tackle these issues. This is a large community and I just hope that parents take the work that the district does and the commitment and responsibility that the board has undertaken with the seriousness that we do and not to say that people don't. But again, it's important to confront, engage these conversations about how we progress student achievement and make sure that our students have an overall educational experience that benefits them, just not for the time that they are within our schools, but becomes a lifelong success for them that we were able to contribute to.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. All right, if there's nothing else from my colleagues, I'll move on to my board president's report. First, quick update from Betty Madalena. Our littlest learners at the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center were recently treated to a pumpkin patch, right, on their school grounds. Their playground was transformed into a pumpkin patch where students could experience picking their very own pumpkin. There were many pumpkin-related activities offered to the preschoolers, including decorating their pumpkin and then taking it home to share their experience with their families. So it sounds like exciting time for our littlest learners. Also, I thought our student liaisons would have mentioned this, but congratulations to our marching band, who are, would you like to? So I'm sure no offense was intended, but yes, congratulations to our, our marching band, the Marching Mountaineers, which won the state championship recently. I had the opportunity to see them perform at the football game the night, or two nights, I guess it was, before they went to the championship and they are an amazing band. So if you had the opportunity, maybe at this Friday's football game, you should come out and watch them. Also, want to take a moment to note that the tennis courts behind the high school, since our last meeting, they have been reopened. It's a long time coming, but we've been working with the town to get them fixed up. They are beautiful. We opened them up and had the ceremonial first serve by the captain of our girls' tennis team. And so it's exciting to have those courts finished and ready to go. And thank you to the town for their work and thank you to Mr. Moore for, for your work and Mr. Stefan Sekala for all of his work in coordinating that. And then finally, just a point of personal privilege, thank you to the community for your support last week on election day. Proud of the work that we have accomplished here in the last few years, Mr. Stevens and I, and then Ms. Vera and Dr. Bryant more recently, after they joined the board. I'm glad that we are back together as a team. All of us were reelected. And I look forward to what we can all accomplish in the next few years. I think big things are coming for West Orange, right?
I would say so.
All right. I don't know what they are, but big things. To be continued. And with that, that will conclude my report. Next up, we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment?
Adam Kramer, Twenty Moran Road. As a citizen who wants the next generation to be educated and able to function well in society, these numbers, these test results are extremely disconcerting. They show that education is not happening as it should. These kids need to know math. The careers will be in STEM. If you don't know math, you're going to get ripped off left and right going through life. Whether it is supermarket, car dealer, financial advisor, buying the first home. Math is critical and it doesn't matter whether you're Hispanic, wealthy, African-American, you need to know math. And everybody knowing math will do a lot to equalize society and it's extremely disappointing. And as a taxpayer who pays one of the highest school tax in the nation, here in West Orange, I really am questioning the effectiveness of that money, how it's being allocated and used. With, is it really doing what it's supposed to do? My perspective is the system has to change in terms of accountability. From what I see, if the numbers don't change, nobody's job's on the line. It's unlikely people will even see a letter of reprimanding in personnel file. Conversely, if some wonderful educator figures out how to advance things, are they going to get a promotion? Are they going to get a nice bonus? Also accountability down to students and parents. Maybe students and parents have to be told, you're not meeting standards, you have to remain in a grade a while till you meet those standards. I think that's a lot of why we see what we're seeing. I'd like to see a bonus pool for my tax dollars go to the educators and administrators who really figure out how to solve that mess. As a taxpayer, I'd pay more to see that and I don't like paying taxes. I don't think you really have a process problem or curriculum problem, although I do think you need to reconsider how much time you give in math in sixth grade. I work in Glen Ridge, Glen Ridge, which is doing much better on the state test. They have ninety-minute blocks of math in sixth grade, just for comparison. I think you have a lot of work to do. And I think what happens here may be more critical to our society than what happened at the town, state, or even national election. It's the next generation. It's disconcerting. And even though I lost the election, I have faith that you'll somehow figure it out. But I really don't like what I'm seeing now, nor should anybody in West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will move on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve Personnel Items A one through A four?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I want to congratulate the following retiree, Lou Quagliata, our Director of Visual and Performing Arts for the District, for his twenty-three years of amazing service. Thank you, Lou, for your service to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Stevenson? You look like you want to say something.
No, no, we've gone through all the agenda items. Is there not a second? I'm just, I'm lost in the agenda.
No, this is the first agenda item on personnel.
Okay, gotcha.
So there are more to come.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. All right, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant, yes. Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, may I have a motion to approve the Curriculum and Instruction Items B one through B five?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant, yes. Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, may I have a motion to approve the Finance Items, C, Special Services Item A one through two, and Business Office Items B one through six?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President here. Any discussion? I'd like to acknowledge a donation we received from the Dr. Jeremiah Stammler Revocable Trust in the amount of $1,000. Dr. Stammler was a cardiovascular researcher who was at the forefront of studies that identified risk factors for heart disease and ways to prevent it. And you might wonder why he donated money to West Orange Public Schools, considering he worked in Chicago, but there's always local connection. Apparently he grew up in West Orange many, many years ago because he was a hundred and two when he passed away. But he remembered, I guess, what he learned here and wanted to give back to our community. So thank you very much to the estate of Jeremiah Stammler. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant, yes. Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, may I have a motion to approve Reports, Item D one?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Vera. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Vera?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to my board colleagues for that. Next up, we have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda item that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time. State your name and address for the record.
So I just want to make a quick comment, seeing that there are no citizens who are speaking in the non-agenda items. You know, I just want to actually suffix what you said, Mr. Rock, with respect to the importance of elections and elections mattering. So some Board of Education elected by the citizens of West Orange at some prior time approved a reduction in the math and ELA block from eighty minutes to fifty-five minutes. Some Board of Education previously elected by the citizens of West Orange eliminated a K through six and then a seven, eight, and then a high school transition and put in place a K through five, a middle six, and then a transition from sixth to seventh and eighth. Some Board of Education previously elected by the citizens of West Orange put in place curriculum materials, which are no longer in place because this Board of Education has currently constructed, notwithstanding the additions of Ms. Vera and Dr. Bryant, changed the ELA and math curriculums at the elementary school level. And so I say all that to say that to Mr. Kramer's point, boards of education in local communities do matter. And I think the questions raised tonight with respect to the student assessment data indicates that this board is doing what boards of education should do, which is ask good questions about student performance data, ask good questions about the overall administration of the district, ask good questions that in the place of parents, that we've been elected to represent, that we ask these questions. And so not addressing anyone specifically, but addressing a larger community. I speak for myself and I think my colleagues would join me in saying it's questions that this Board of Education will continue to raise and ask for the benefit of our students and their families. So I just think it's important that we all are aware of that, that there's been no abdication of that. I think Mr. Rock alluded to it earlier. We have really worked very aggressively in the last three years to examine and put in place things that we believe will benefit students and families. And I don't expect that to change because I think that as a board, we have a consensus of purpose, even if there is disagreement internally among us sometimes, to get things done for people. So thank you for your support as a community. Thank you, President Rock, for your leadership. Mr. Moore, thank you for your leadership and your commitment to our community. Because I think one of the greatest decisions the board made was appointing you as superintendent, given the lack of tenure in your predecessors. So it's my hope, it's my prayer that there is a long tenure for you as superintendent, that your leadership will yield continuity of leadership within your cabinet, within central office, and that begins to trickle down, don't want to use that term, but, but gets down at the level of this pyramid where in the classroom, your vision, your hope, your aspiration is reflected day to day in the work that our teachers, our administrators do in conjunction with our families. So thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Any other comments from the board? All right, then may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second. Sorry, give me a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on December 16th, 2024. This meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going back. We will not be going back into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action taken. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned.